Sandy Page has COVID.
Oh, she does. Oh, my God.
This was something from Lee Kimble. Do you know Lee TSO? She's Brian's partner. Her daughter has it. And the Thomas's daughter of the University of Arkansas.
I had a friend of mine. He goes to a wedding, comes home, has fever, goes to the hospital. They test him and say you have COVID. Give him two Tylenols and he goes home. So he's all feeling great for four days, nothing, and he's all upset why he has to be home. And then all of a sudden hits him. After four days. And he said he was miserable. He had the worst headache.
That's what I've heard.
He said his head was exploding. He couldn't taste anything. He couldn't eat anything.
The incubation period is two to 10 days from exposure.
Probably why I don't, yeah.
Throw in four days just for.
Yeah, he said for four days. He was all upset why he has to stay home.
Yeah, good thing he did.
Tell you what, if it hits my office, we're gonna be dead. It's just gonna be miserable. We're all trying really hard. Our folks, we all have all this special computers that you can't work remotely. Yeah, when you work remotely, it's very, very, very slow. We'll wait another five minutes, huh?
Yeah, you can go ahead and start.
All right. What popular opinion? We get started.
Well, I asked Robert Page how he'd say he was feeling. He said like two peas in a COVID pod.
Well, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the July 20th Planning and Zoning Meeting. My name is Sina Najad, and we get started with Colin DeRoe, please.
Chairman Najad.
Here.
Commissioner Beatty is absent. Commissioner Javid, Commissioner Little is absent. Commissioner Macon is absent. Commissioner Noyola.
Present.
Commissioner Karishi.
Here.
Commissioner Sinigala is absent. Commissioner Steinhagen is absent, and alternate Commissioner Craig.
Great. You have been provided the minutes of the last meeting. I would entertain a motion to approve.
I approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve and a second and a discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition, the ayes have it. So we get started with our first case, and that is the subdivision from Schaumburg and Polk and Mr. Boone.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon to you.
The first item is preliminary plat approval of the Meadows subdivision Phase Four West Beaumont-Jefferson County, Texas. Troy Whitehead of Schaumburg and Polk has requested preliminary plat approval of the Meadows subdivision Phase Four West. This 13.074 acre development will extend West Sage and Meadow Run streets and consist of 35 residential lots. All lots meet the requirements for a residential lot. Water and sewer will be provided by an extension of the city's facilities. And I've got the proposed preliminary plat is up on the screen there. I believe that's the only one we have on the slideshow, but this is roughly at the, it's at the northwest corner of Dishman and Keith. There's an existing subdivision Meadows there, and this is, this unit is immediately south of the existing development. In your packet are a number of conditions requested by the engineering and water department. And based on the proposed, staff is recommending approval of this preliminary plat subject to those conditions included in the staff memorandum. And with that, I do believe Mr. Whitehead is in the audience.
Any questions for Chris? Thank you, Mr. Boone. Mr. Whitehead, good afternoon. If you would introduce yourself and the address, and then give us any additional comments that you might have.
Okay, I'm Troy Whitehead with Schaumburg and Polk, 8865 College Street. And we are working on the proposed development for the developer. I know Chris mentioned the, the conditions that the city staff had, and all of those items have been addressed and will be submitted with construction plans for approval in a day or so.
Great. Any questions for the gentleman? I'm gonna take this off so you can see me smiling to tell you that you're the proud record holder for the largest number of comments from the city staff.
I, I was bestowed upon me, I guess.
So, remember that.
Okay.
That's something to be proud of. Well, great. Any questions for the gentleman? You do understand all the
Yes.
Comments. Great. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we do not require a public hearing, so I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we accept preliminary plat for the Meadows subdivision Phase Four West with all of the 29
Conditions.
Conditions that are listed in our packet.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I have a second.
A motion and a second by Mr. Javid. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition, the ayes have it. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Whitehead. Mr. Boone, the next case would be the preliminary plat of the Outpost Industrial Park.
Yes, sir. Okay, the next item is to consider a request for preliminary plat approval for Outpost Industrial Park, Jefferson County, Texas. Robert Balfour of S and R Consulting has requested preliminary plat approval of Outpost Industrial Park. This 14.696 acre, 12 lot industrial development is mostly located within the city of Beaumont's extraterritorial jurisdiction. However, part of this subdivision is actually located within a small part of Nederland's ETJ. Water and sewer will be provided by Jefferson County Water Control District Number 10. It should be noted that Mr. Balfour has requested a waiver to two of the requirements of the subdivision regulations. They are a reduction of the minimum right-of-way width from 70 feet to 60 feet, and a reduction of the street pavement width from 40 feet to 27 feet. The reasoning they have given for this is, again, it's a, it's a 12 lot industrial subdivision, and so there's not an expectation that the development will be extended for additional traffic. In general, staff is not opposed to the waiver, however, it has come up in the workshop regarding the size of the cul-de-sac, especially given the industrial nature of the development. And as such, staff is recommending approval of the proposed preliminary plat with the waivers subject to the following condition. That the applicant provide adequate right-of-way and pavement dimensions for the proposed cul-de-sac, and that they be approval subject to the city and county engineer. And with that, are there any questions of staff?
Any questions?
Yes, I think 27 feet is not enough as a payment. That's a residential requirement. They have to increase that. I think they can work with engineer, engineering with that, for that. Also, the cul-de-sac of 60 feet is not enough. They have to increase a little bit more so they can work with engineering. We can approve it as, as, as a condition on both of them.
Okay. Good. Thank you, Mr. Boone. Is the applicant in the audience?
Balfour.
Great. Good afternoon, sir. Are you Mr. Balfour?
Yes, sir, I am.
Fantastic. How are you today?
I'm doing fine.
If you would give us your name and address for the record, and give us any additional information you might have.
My name is Robert Balfour. I live at 26, 264 Private Road, 635 in Dayton, Texas.
Great.
I must have misunderstood something about the cul-de-sac being 60 foot wide. The cul-de-sac is designated to be 100 foot wide. There was a 60 foot right-of-way issue. According to Molly's comments in the diagram, she said due to the size of the lots, it's not light industrial. It's more light commercial, and therefore she, you know, went on and approved the 27 foot back-to-back of the roadway, and it only required a 50 foot right-of-way. The reason we're showing 60 foot right-of-way is to match Jefferson County's requirements, because we're trying to meet their requirements, because they're gonna be the ones maintaining it, because they said if we design the road and have geotechnical and design the pavement to their standards, you know, they would approve it, and they will take over maintenance of the storm sewer and the roadway after the fact. And that's all I have on it.
Okay, in here, it says, yeah, the 50 feet is the radius of the, the right of the cul-de-sac, and 24 feet is the face-to-face of the curb, so
That is old. I have the packet here. It's 27, 26 foot face-to-face and 27 foot back-to-back. And we submitted a new preliminary plat.
So, according to the 26 feet of the face-to-face. Okay, 50 feet wide is not enough for the cul-de-sac, right?
It's 100 foot wide.
Okay, it's, it says 50 feet. That should have been the radius.
Yeah, it looks like the ra, shown on the plan is the radius is 50 feet. So the diameter would be 100.
Okay.
And we would, again, we would recommend just subject to county engineering approval. And if it, if it meets their condition, their requirements, then we would be minimal to that.
So this is ETJ, right?
Yes, sir.
So the city might take over?
Well, the city, for improvements in the city's ETJ, our engineers do review and look at it with the idea that one day we would take over maintenance and ownership.
So the, the clarification would be that this should be per city and the county's requirements, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions for the gentleman?
One more thing. Molly said because it's in the ETJ, you know, they could use a flexible base pavement or asphalt, but we are designing it to 80,000 pound capsule load, you know, concrete pavement, line stabilization, and so forth, per the geotechnical. We're not trying to go with the minimum pavement.
That's great. We're gonna rely on, on what the geotechnical recommends and what the city and the county require.
Yes, sir.
Perfect. Thank you, sir. Any questions for the gentleman? No? Okay.
All right, thank you.
So I'm ready for a motion, and the, the clarification would be that if, if the commission chooses to approve this, we need to make sure that the, the engineering complies with the requirement of the city of Beaumont and the Jefferson County. And also, the, the road shall be designed as per recommended by the geotechnical engineer for the required load. Now, with that, I would entertain a motion.
I approve with the conditions of, for the city requirements and the county requirements.
Okay, we have a motion to approve per city and the county requirements, and we have a second for Ms. Craig. Any discussion? Is this clear to everybody? Good. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition, the ayes have it. Great. We have just completed our regular meeting, and the Honorable Madam Mayor is here, so she's gonna take over from here.
Thank you, Chairman. May we have the roll call, please?
Mayor Ames.
Here.
Mayor Pertham Belshaw.
Present.
Councilmember Peters absent. Councilmember Neal.
Present.
Councilmember Getz.
Present.
Councilmember Samuel, and Mooton are absent.
Okay, I don't see that we have anyone in the audience other than us, but I will just let everyone know that the reason that we're here today is to have a joint public hearing between the Planning Commission and the City Council. Today, we will hear the cases before us. The chairman will ask for anyone that wants to speak regarding these cases, either for or against. At the end, they'll make a motion, and that is for a recommendation to the City Council. The City Council will entertain these items in about two weeks, and that will be the final decision. The public will not be able to speak at the City Council meeting, but it is on the agenda. That is the purpose for our meeting today, and a joint public hearing. Thank y'all for coming. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Boone, 2416P.
All right. File 2416P is to consider a request for an amended specific use permit to allow the expansion of an air conditioning supply warehouse in a GCND district at 980 North MLK. Mo Cottawala, representing M and B Investments, is requesting an amended specific use permit to allow this expansion of a wholesale heating and air conditioning supply business. City Council approved the original SUP for this business back in 2007. In addition, a variance from the Board of Adjustment was granted as part of this project to reduce the setbacks along the north and east property lines. The new building will provide an additional 5,000 square feet of space. Let me go ahead and show you. The site in question is outlined in red, and you'll see here it's at the intersection of MLK and Long. And this is an aerial view looking towards the north of the site. And the, let's see. Here's the proposed site plan. Here's the subject property. The subject property, this is looking south across the railroad. Subject property here, looking towards the east. Subject property and looking south. One thing I'll go ahead and point out is, in the previous amended specific use permit, there was a condition for a six-foot wide landscaping strip along the west side of the parking area. And in the picture here, and again, we're on MLK looking eastward. It required there be a landscaping strip right there behind the, the light pole. That's the lighter color pole there. However, the addition was made back then, but the landscaping strip was never made. So we're not sure if it was, or if it was done, if it was removed at some point. Let me go ahead and show you the other pictures to the north. This is a view to the south. And a view to the east. And so, based on this application, staff is recommending approval subject to the following conditions. Number one, provide a six-foot wide landscape strip along the west side of the parking lot between the two driveways as per city of Beaumont ordinance requirements. Those are the, that's the landscape strip on the parking lot that I was referring to. Number two, provide an eight-foot tall wood or masonry screening fence along the east property line. Three, show sidewalk on the site plan. And one other condition is resolve issues with the property line to the south. During our review of this site plan, it appeared that there may be a discrepancy of the property line as it's shown on the, on the site plan. And depending upon whether or not it's accurate would affect the parking, or could affect the parking. So we're, we believe the applicant is aware of this, and they're working to resolve it, but we just wanted to make it a condition that they resolve those issues regarding the south property line. We did send 24 notices to neighboring properties. We received zero in favor and zero in opposition. So with that, are there questions of staff?
When you say south property line, there is a good bit of landscaping between the line and the parking. Is that the section or the one to the southeast?
Yeah, if you look on the, let me pull up the site plan. And really, the, it was, if you see where this
Oh, you have a different drawing. That's on, that's what's in here. The one that I have, it shows landscaping between the concrete and the property line.
Right, on the, to the south.
Yeah.
But the reason for our request for the, let me see. Yeah, we're recommending provide a six-foot wide landscaping strip along the west side of the parking lot between the two driveways as per city of Beaumont. So if you look at the two driveways there, where basically the red line there between the two driveways, if you go back to the 2007 site plan, that was supposed to be landscaped, and it never was.
Yeah, th, this one shows landscaping.
Okay.
Or it shows grass.
Yeah, now on the south side, it is showing, it is showing grass. But are, we're recommending that it be, that that landscape strip be installed on the west side of the parking lot.
Can you go back to your site plan, please?
Yes.
Yeah. That site plan is different than this one.
This was the site plan that supposedly resolved the issues that we found with that south property line. So Faust corrected their, their drawing instantly and new, and that's why I put it in the slideshow.
Okay, so the site plan that was in your packet
Was promoted.
Is, well, no, it's, it's propos, it was what was originally proposed, but when we started looking at the property lines in the proposed site plan, it didn't match up. So we reached out to the applicant and said, look, this looks like it's not matching up. And so apparently, they've submitted a revised set site plan, which is, this is what's in front of you, so.
So are you gonna put the, the landscaping buffer where there's concrete?
Well, this, this is all commercial here along, so there's not a required buffer. What we're asking for is a buffer. On, if you look how the property line splits that driveway, we're asking for a landscape buffer in that little half parking space there going up to the, to the, to the next driveway, because that's, that's what was requested and approved back in 2007.
Okay, as long as we can relay that to the gentleman there, I'm good, but okay.
All right. I do believe the applicant is here.
All right, no other questions for Chris? Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon, sir. How are you?
I'm doing very well. If you would state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Mahmoud O. Cottawala.
Great.
My address, property address is 980 North MLK Junior Parkway, Beaumont.
Great, sir. Do you have any additional information you'd like to pass on to us?
No, sir, they pretty well covered it real good, because like Mr. Vina said, you know, that when they surveyed the property, Faust Engineering, they didn't find the markers exactly where they were supposed to. So we're gonna put bumpers, automobile, you know, car bumpers to keep it from going to the adjacent property. Other than that, everything looks fine.
Okay. You understand the recommendation of the city?
Yeah, they want me to put a six-foot fence on the east, east side, and put a little green rain step on the west side, and put the bumpers on the south side.
Okay. Any questions for the gentleman? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against? I guess there's nobody in the audience today, so I just have to say it. Anyway, so we, we closed the public hearing, and we heard from the staff and the applicant, and he does understand the, the requirements from the city, so I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we approve file 2416P with the recommendations of the staff.
We have a motion and a second and a discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition, the ayes have it. Thank you. Mr. Boone, 2417P.
Okay, oops. All right, the final item on today's agenda is File 2417P, and it's to consider a specific use permit to allow a recreational vehicle RV park in an LI Light Industrial District at 5497 Fennett. R and P Brothers LLC has requested a specific use permit to construct an RV park at this location. The proposed RV park will have 60 separate lots. An office and clubhouse will provide laundry, facilities, showers, and restrooms. The site plan also shows 20 visitor parking spaces and one ADA compliant parking space. And I'll go ahead and show you the slides, the site outlined there in red. And this is an aerial view of the proposed site. Hard to read, but this is their proposed RV park. A view of the subject property. A view to the north. A view to the south. Also to the south. And this is to the east. There's a residential neighborhood. There's a residential neighborhood that backs up to the property. And let's see, we did send out twenty-five notices to adjacent property owners and have received zero in favor and zero in opposition. Staff is recommending approval of this proposed RV park, subject to the following condition. This project will require an approved drainage plan and will require an adequate detention basin per Drainage District Six requirements. And with that, are there any questions of staff?
Not sure with all this concrete, where they're gonna put the detention?
Well, there's some discussion of underground, as we understand it.
Wow.
Right.
And Chris, do you remember if the ADA is one every fifteen or every, one every fifty spaces?
I would have to look that up.
Okay, no problem. Your, your guys are gonna look at it. And the applicant is, is he in the audience? Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon.
Would you please introduce yourself and give us your address for the record?
Bupesh M. Patel. Address is seven four one zero Pebble Beach Drive, Beaumont, Texas, seven 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 zero seven.
Great. Do you have any additional information that you're gonna give us?
No, the only information I think Mr. Boone didn't share, or he didn't put out here is that these are, will create about seven jobs, out of that, I think, three will be full-time job and four will be part-time jobs.
Okay. And have you thought anymore about the detention pond that's supposed to be here?
Detention pond, I think there's, I do not know much about it, but the designer or the architect, he claims there is a way that you can put it under the road. There, there is a technology, new technology. They had done it somewhere else over here, I'm not sure, but he can be of, he can explain it there in more detail.
Okay. As long as you're aware about that's required.
Yes.
Any questions for the gentleman? Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
You too.
Is there anybody that would like to speak for or against this case? None is heard, so we close the public hearing, and we've heard from the applicant and also the, the staff, and I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that it be approved under the drainage conditions and that the drainage conditions be met.
We have a motion with, with the caveat of the drainage issues to be approved by the city of the county. And looking for a second.
A second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition, the ayes have it. Thank you very much. Madam Mayor, we're done.
Well, thank y'all so much for coming. We are now with gentlemen.